Alright, it's 5:31 PM. I'd like to call to order tonight's regular Board of Education meeting for Wednesday, May 18th, 2022, here in the boardroom of the MAPS Central Admin Building. If we could have a roll call, please, Tammy.
Chad Krieger.
Here.
Ron Liberty.
Here.
Kendra Osness.
Here.
Jacqueline Gremler.
Here.
Maria Wolfie.
Here.
Brett Waller. Linda Yingling. Paul Prue.
Here.
Kevin Blake.
Here. Can you please join me and face the flag, stand as you're able to pledge?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, united, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
My chair doesn't move there.
Good evening and welcome to the Merrill Area Public Schools Board of Education meeting. MAPS respects the role our elected board members serve and the function of our board meetings. Board members and administrators are committed to working collaboratively to provide our students a safe learning environment and the highest levels of achievement. This meeting is a formal event and professional conduct is the expectation for all in attendance. Thank you. Thank you, Dr. Sample. First on our agenda is public comments to the board. I did not have any sheets turned in, so we will work our way to board recognition. Right off the bat, the board would like to recognize the following students for their exemplary efforts in organizing the MHS Spring Job Fair with over forty businesses and community partners displayed and over eight hundred students in attendance. We'd like to recognize tonight Brody Benedict, Megan Cordova, Haley Drebeg, Tru Fairfield, Lacy Frisch, Katie Glaze, Corey Giggles, Xavier Granholm, Jack Hook, Marissa Hoffman, Emma Rodella, Braden Peiper, Elizabeth Schmidt, Grace Schultz, and James Watts. We'd also like to recognize their instructors or teachers, Olivia Daco and Alyssa Resch. Congratulations on this very successful event. I did give Ms. Daco all of your certificates if you could come up, please.
The students who were able, unfortunately, I wish more of our students could join us today, but as you know, many of them have jobs, many of them are volunteers for after school. There's a lot going on. So I just wanted to take a moment to recognize the whole group of our faculty and by our marketing students and everybody involved to make this event happen. It was many months in the undertaking, taking many community members, many faculty members, and many, many students who were dedicated to making sure advancement. So Cory, would you like to say a few words?
Yeah, it took a lot of commitment and me and Xavier, we even spent our lunch period working on this and I wasn't there to see it sadly, but I heard it turned out great.
Yeah, I also helped volunteer with this event and I really appreciate the efforts by all these fellow peers of mine and I was glad to be a part of it. And I'd also like to thank the board too, like, you know, we have a great environment in Merrill High School and it steps back to, you know, the decisions made here, so thank you.
I'd also like to thank the board for guys providing a nice environment for us.
Yeah, I would like to thank you for these past amazing years at the Merrill High School and I love my faculty group too. It was an amazing year with you guys.
Yay!
Hold on one second. That's okay, Emma's here.
Come in.
Should me move so they can get a picture?
Yeah. Either that or you're gonna join the picture. One or the other's a part of it. If I could get them to step in here and Daco stepped in so we can, if you'd like, or just smile and face Tammy.
Okay, well, should we open them? We should open them. Okay, I'll take it.
Have me up that three, four minutes floor.
Every time one of those dreams, like you're just not prepared for something?
All the time.
You see what I did there? I gave her the stack. That's how I normally look.
It was very smart.
Yeah, clever, right? She had these new ol'... I hope. Smile and look at this is more where we have to speak again.
Did you have one, say thanks to anybody here?
Thanks, everyone. Another round of applause. Before you guys walk away, could you, Liz, introduce yourself and then have everybody just, I called a pretty big group, but not everybody recognizes everyone, so if you could start on that side.
So I'm Liz, I've been here multiple times, so maybe you guys recognize me or not.
Liz Smith?
Yes, I'm Anna Ariola.
I'm Heidi Drebeg.
I'm Marissa Hoffman.
I'm Lacy Frisch.
I'm Corey Giggles.
Thank you so much.
Alright. Thank you. Alright, next, the board would like to recognize, so we can have them in a photo, our departing school board representative Amelia Scobera and our returning for next year board representative Isaiah Rell and thank them for this year of service.
Thank you.
Thank you both, serving the board here as our student board representatives.
Thank you for giving us the opportunity.
Thank you.
Really does enlighten us, as we say every time, on what's going on at the high school and all the activities and I understand Mr. Murray would like to help announce the new student school board rep for next school year. Without further ado, if you could give us an introduction.
I want to recognize and thank Amelia as well because she's like, her and Isaiah this year have been like old faithful showing up every time. Meet you and talk about what the message will be for you, so thank you.
Thank you.
This is Brooke Rudai, she's the daughter of Ryan and Robin Rudai, she's a sophomore. She's very much like Amelia, actually. She's really got it together, involved in a lot of stuff and I'm looking forward to her filling those roles because she's, this is Brooke, everyone.
I'm gonna pick on you some other night, Brooke. Cory, that I made speak for a while, let you soak that all in tonight, but thank you for being here to be introduced. But at this time, you'll get, you'll get to see Isaiah and Amelia actually in action here, so I'm gonna turn the floor over to them for a student board of education representative report, so whichever one would like to go first, go ahead.
Okay, so the end of the year is upon us and a senior awards night is here. On May 25th at 7:00 PM, seniors are getting recognized for scholarships earned and are also receiving their cords. This is the first time they will be hearing about what scholarships they applied for in I think February, January that they had applied for. And this is being held in the high school auditorium and was only open to seniors who received awards as well as their families and every board member also received an invitation. And not too long following, senior awards night is graduation on May 27th in the high school fieldhouse. This year it is open to everyone and there's no limit on who is able to attend. The ceremony starts at 6:00 PM, but doors open I think at 5:00 PM for those that want to get a good seat. And also, the evening of May 26th, so right after or right before, marks the first round of interviews for the new high school principal position and although it is hard to think that Mr. Murray will be leaving the high school, we are excited to see him fill the role of superintendent.
The tests may not be every student's favorite part of the year, but they're a great way to test a student's knowledge and mark a culmination for the school year. Sports are also coming to a close as well and playoffs, regionals, and sectionals are coming up for the spring sports teams. The teams have high hopes for their teams in their respective playoffs. This spring sports season has been a really great chance for students to build relationships and compete together.
Alright, thank you guys. Any board members have any questions, clarifying or otherwise for our student board reps? Otherwise, I think they did a nice job explaining things, thank you.
Thank you.
Next on our agenda this evening are the administrative reports. Just a reminder, if board members have questions about any of the administrative reports, certainly can contact any of the administrators who are putting those reports together prior. If you just want clarification, you can certainly speak on the record and have any questions answered by that administrator if they are present or ask the superintendent for clarification as well. This will especially be important here in the next few months as we do have vacations and time off, so the more we can do that in advance, the better we will be. But at this time, I'd like to turn it over to Dr. Sample for the administrative reports. Thank you, Kevin. Tricia Dieter is present as well as Karen Baker and myself, so does anybody have any questions about any administrative reports leading up to my superintendent's report?
I do have updated numbers for the spreadsheet. We have some COVID-related absences, so when I have to submit this, we weren't able to calculate it, but the snack counts for nine hundred nineteen snacks served in April and lunch counts one thousand two hundred.
Thanks, Tricia, appreciate your accuracy. Superintendent's report, you can see the monthly activities and meetings. This is also that time of year we're in completing the end-of-year administrative evaluations. Those are in progress. I will have the rest of them completed and on the next report. You can see the agenda for the building principal meetings as well as the hall meeting and central office administrative meetings as well as the three weekly bulletins for staff that go out each and every Friday since the last board meeting. Any questions for me or anything on my report? Thank you, Kevin. Thank you, Dr. Sample. Next on our agenda this evening is the committee reports in action. We'll start with board and membership committee appointments for 2022-2023 and description of all those committees. I've worked diligently on committee appointments per bylaw 0155 to try to get a nice diverse group working together on each committee. We are still all, if you're not on that committee, optional attendees and of course we do suggest that to do the best we can to be at everything you can be at as far as committees, even those you are not on, so we will do our best there and thank you all for your flexibility and sending me all of the priority assignments and appointments that you would prefer. With that said, then Dr. Sample also works on putting his appointments and everything together going into other regular board meetings for next year's membership purpose and meeting dates. And with that comes a recommended motion. Is someone willing to make the motion? Maria?
I move to approve the appointments made by the superintendent for committee membership of the 2022-2023 school year.
I'll second. Motion by Maria, we have a second by Ron. Any discussion or questions on the motion or this topic? Questions or discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor of the motion signify by saying aye. Anyone opposed, say nay. Any abstentions? Motion carries. Next item in this section is our facilities committee. We last met on May 4th and the draft minutes were attached. Myself as chair and other members of that committee are available for questions. Do we have any questions this evening for the facilities committee? Hearing none, we'll move on to the finance human resources committee. That committee last met on May 4th as well with attached draft minutes. Members of that committee are available for any questions. Do we have any questions for the finance human resources committee this evening? Hearing none, next on our agenda is the CTP or Curriculum Technology Pupil Services Committee. There are attached draft minutes from the May 11th committee meeting chaired by Maria Wolfie. Any questions for any members of our CTP committee at this time? Hearing none, we will move on on the agenda. We have nothing under the category currently of unfinished business, so we will move on directly to board of education business. And our first topic on that section of the agenda is a resolution authorizing the transfer of funds, establishment of an escrow account with respect to and the defeasance of the taxable general obligation refunding bond series 2019 dated October 24th, 2019. Attached, we had a draft resolution in connection with that above referenced defeasance transaction as well as a topic summary sheet from Edward Then. There is a recommended motion, is anyone prepared to make a motion this evening? Maria?
I move to approve the PMA contract as presented, the quarrels and brief scope of engagement as presented in the resolution authorizing the transfer of funds, the establishment of an escrow account with respect to and the defeasance of the taxable general obligation refunding bond series 2019 dated October 24th, 2019.
Motion by Maria, do we have a second? Second by Chad. Is there any discussion or questions on this motion or topic? Any questions or discussion? Hearing none, based on the topic in general, it is strongly suggested that we do a roll call vote, so Tammy, do we have a roll call vote on that motion, please?
Chad Krieger.
Aye.
Ron Liberty.
Aye.
Kendra Osness.
Aye.
Jacqueline Gremler.
Aye.
Maria Wolfie.
Aye.
Paul Prue.
Aye.
Kevin Blake.
Aye. Motion carries unanimously for those in attendance on a roll call vote. Next item on our agenda this evening is the approval of the 2022-2023 MATA calendar with an attached topic summary sheet from Shannon Murray and a recommended motion from our CTP committee. Do we have a motion this evening? Ron?
Make a motion to approve the 2022-23 MATA calendar.
Motion by Ron, we have a second. Any discussion or questions on that motion or this topic? Any discussion or questions? Hearing none, all those in favor of the motion signify by saying aye. Anyone opposed, say nay. Any abstentions? Motion carries unanimously on a voice vote. Next item on our agenda this evening is the approval of Washington DC and New York City trip for 2023. Attached topic summary sheet was provided by Ryan Martinovich and a recommended motion from our CTP committee. Do we have a motion this evening? Paul?
I move to approve the eighth grade Washington DC, New York City trip for June of 2023. Motion by Paul, second by Kendra. Any discussion, questions? Ron followed by Paul, please.
Mr. Martinovich was not at the meeting, I wonder if he had anything to add? Was he here tonight? No?
I really don't have an ad or agree with people talking.
Okay, thank you.
Unless there's any other questions, that trip is not included.
You could come up toward the microphone, Paul, leave us a specific question.
This the, this year's trip is just New York or just Washington DC, correct?
This year's trip, yeah. I hope we kept it, I added the New York component because I was vocal about that replacing it. That was an add-on several years ago and we'll have that here unfortunately.
Okay, thank you.
Any additional questions on this motion or topic? Hearing none, all those in favor of that motion signify by saying aye. Anyone opposed, say nay. We have any abstentions? Motion carries. Next item on our agenda is the approval of open enrollment applications with a memo from Karen Baker. We do have two separate motions that we, if you're prepared to motion or move them, and we will treat them separately. Do we have anyone willing to make the motion? Maria?
I move to approve the 242 new students open enrollment to MAPS, deny the five applications that do not meet open enrollment district criteria, and also approve the 590 open enrolled students continuing at MAPS.
Motion by Maria, we have a second by Ron. Do we have any discussion or questions on this motion or topic? Any questions or discussion on this motion or topic? Seeing no hands, all those in favor of the motion signify by saying aye. Anyone opposed, say nay. We have any abstentions? Motion carries. We do have a second suggested motion, Paul?
I move to approve the thirty-eight new students indicating open enrollment out of MAPS and also approve the 148 open enrolled students continuing to open enroll out of MAPS.
Motion by Paul, do we have a second? Second by Chad. Any discussion or question on this motion or this topic? Any discussion or questions on the motion or topic? Hearing none, all those in favor of that motion signify by saying aye. Anyone opposed, say nay. We have any abstentions? Motion carries. Next item on our agenda this evening is the approval of the Prairie River Middle School first and third floor restroom repairs with an attached topic summary sheet from Dale Bergman and a recommended motion from our facilities committee. Do we have a motion this evening? Ron?
Make a motion to approve the repairs for the first and third floor employees bathroom at Prairie River Middle School.
Motion by Ron, second by Paul. Any discussion or questions on this motion or topic?
You know Dale's not here, does that include, do they still do in the second floor yet? All at once?
Yes. A lot of that helps with the mobilization, has talked that committee so we could save some money for them to be there at that time. Any additional questions or discussion on this motion or topic? Hearing none, all those in favor of the motion signify by saying aye. Anyone opposed, say nay. Any abstentions? Motion carries unanimously on a voice vote. Next item on our agenda is the approval of the lifeguard wage structure with an attached topic summary sheet from Dale Bergman and a recommended motion from our facilities committee. Do we have a motion this evening? Maria?
Move to approve the increase to the lifeguard wage structure effective May 19th, 2022.
Motion by Maria, we have a second by Ron. Any discussion or question on this motion or topic? Any questions or discussion on this motion or topic? Hearing none, all those in favor of the motion signify by saying aye. Anyone opposed, say nay. Any abstentions? Motion carries unanimously on a voice vote. Next item on our agenda this evening is the approval of the 2022-2023 summer maintenance projects with an attached topic summary sheet from Dale Bergman and a recommended motion from our facilities committee. Do we have a motion this evening? Maria?
I move to approve the summer maintenance projects for 2022-2023 as funding is available.
Motion by Maria, do we have a second? Second by Paul. Any discussion or questions on this topic or this motion? Questions on the topic or the motion? Hearing none, all those in favor of this motion signify by saying aye. Anyone opposed, say nay. Any abstentions? Motion carries unanimously on a voice vote. Next item on our agenda this evening is the 2022-2023 staff handbook review, the second read and approval with attached topic summary sheet from Edward Then, recommended motion from our finance human resources committee. Do we have a motion this evening? Paul?
I move to approve the 2022-2023 teacher and support staff handbook on the second reading.
Alright, we have a motion by Paul, we have a second. Second by Ron. Any discussion or questions on this topic or motion? Any discussion on the topic or motion? Hearing none, all those in favor of the motion signify by saying aye. Anyone opposed, say nay. Any abstentions? Motion carries on a voice vote. Next on our agenda this evening is the purchase of capital equipment for the fab lab. We had a copy summary sheet provided by Shannon Murray and Josh Zaluski, recommended motion from our finance human resources committee. Do we have a motion this evening? Maria?
I move to approve the purchase of both a Wazza desktop water jet for $11,500 and an X-16 UV flatbed printer for $31,500.
Motion by Maria, we have a second. Second by Chad. Any discussion or questions on the motion or this topic? Any discussion on the motion or this topic? Hearing none, all those in favor of this motion signify by saying aye. Anyone opposed, say nay. We have any abstentions? Motion carries unanimously on a voice vote. Next item on our agenda this evening is the Fund 46 Capital Improvement Plan with the type, attached topic summary sheet is from Dale Bergman and a recommended motion from our finance human resources committee. Do we have a motion? Ron?
Make a motion to approve the updated tenure capital improvement plan as funding allows.
Motion by Ron, we have a second, we have a second by Paul. Any discussion or questions on the motion or this topic? Just to add on to that, this is something that does get reviewed and looked at, the original one was done approximately five years ago, so what we do is the update which things have been done, forecast out further using some of the tools from the maintenance and facilities department or buildings and grounds and we work on that and make sure that it is recorded so we can use those things as guidance for our Fund 46 expenditures. Any additional questions on this topic or motion? Hearing none, all those in favor of this motion signify by saying aye. Anyone opposed, say nay. Any abstentions? Motion carries unanimously on a voice vote. Next item on our agenda this evening is the health insurance renew, renewal. Topic summary sheet was provided by Edward Then, recommended motion by our finance human resources committee. Do we have a motion this evening? Maria?
Move to approve the renewal of the health insurance with Aspiris Health Plan as presented for fiscal year 23 with no changes to the contribution percentage rates.
Motion by Maria, do we have a second? Any discussion on this topic or motion? Any discussion on this topic or motion? Hearing none, all those in favor of the motion signify by saying aye. Anyone opposed, say nay. Any abstentions?
I abstained.
Motion carries, noted abstention. Next item on our agenda this evening is the dental insurance renewal, topic summary sheet provided by Edward Then, recommended motion by our finance human resources committee. Do we have a motion this evening? Maria?
Move to approve the renewal of the dental insurance at zero percent with Delta Dental as a third-party administrator as presented for fiscal year 23 and no changes to the contribution percentage rates.
Motion by Maria, we have a second, second by Ron. Any discussion on this topic or motion? Any discussion on this topic or motion? Hearing none, all those in favor of the motion signify by saying aye. Anyone opposed, say nay. Any abstentions?
I abstained.
Motion carries, noted abstention. Next item on our agenda tonight is the voluntary benefits insurance renewal, topic summary sheet was provided by Edward Then, our finance human- Our finance human resources committee has a recommended motion. Do we have a motion this evening? Ron?
Recommend approval of the renewal of both dental debt, Delta Dental's vision plan and Guardian's various offerings as voluntary benefits for fiscal year twenty-three as presented.
Motion by Ron, we have a second by Paul. Do we have any discussion on this motion or topic? Any discussion on this motion or topic this evening? Hearing none, all those in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed, say nay. Any abstentions?
I will abstain.
Motion carries with the noted abstention. Next item on our agenda is the fiscal year twenty-three operational insurance renewal. Topic summary sheet was provided by Edward Dunn. Recommended motion by our finance human resources committee. Do we have a motion this evening? Paul?
I move the renewal of insurance coverages for Church Mutual Insurance and F and D as presented by Marsh and McLanahan, as well as the additional identity recovery protection for fiscal year twenty-three.
Motion by Paul, do we have a second?
Make a friendly amendment?
Yeah, I was going to get the second one, but.
Oh, okay.
Can you add C I C in front of Church Mutual on that, please?
Yes.
Thank you. Do we have a second? Second by Ron, thank you.
No problem.
Any discussion on this topic or motion? Any discussion on the topic or motion? Hearing none, all those in favor of that motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed, say nay. Any abstentions?
I will abstain.
All right. Motion carries with the noted abstention. We'll move on to the next item on our agenda is the approval of the federal COLA supplemental and quality improvement funds with attached topic summary sheet from Tricia Dieter. The recommended motion, do we have a motion this evening? Kendra?
I recommend a motion to approve the twenty twenty-two, twenty twenty-three Head Start Federal COLA Supplemental and Quality Improvement Funds.
Motion by Kendra, do we have a second? Second by Jaclyn. Any discussion on this motion or topic? Any discussion on the motion or the topic? Tricia, anything you'd like to add, it was pretty clear cut, but.
Um, so as I'm learning with all things Head Start, I did not expect to get the Quality Improvement Funds this year. Um, they came together in package deals, so that was wonderful. Um, COLA, as you know, offsets wages, but quality, the Quality Improvement Funds can be used for anything from, um, trauma training for staff to wages, to any improvements that we need to make in our program in the physical space as well. So it was pretty encompassing on the improvements that we can make. So that was a nice surprise for the council over this.
Absolutely. Thank you. Any additional or any questions or discussion on this topic or motion? Hearing none, all those in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed, say nay. Any abstentions? Motion carries unanimously on a voice vote. Next item on our agenda this evening is the approval of the Head Start State Supplemental Funds with the topic summary sheet from Tricia Dieter and a recommended motion. Do we have a motion this evening? Kendra?
I recommend a motion to approve the twenty twenty-two to twenty twenty-three application for state Head Start supplemental funds.
Motion by Kendra, do we have a second? We have a second by Chad. Any discussion or questions on this topic or motion this evening? Anything you'd like to add, Tricia?
No, this is just funding that comes directly from V P S. And they're using it to cover wages.
Any additional questions or discussion on this topic? Hearing none, all those in favor of that motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed, say nay. Any abstentions? Motion carries unanimously on a voice vote. Next item on our agenda this evening is capital purchases for our metals program, a topic summary sheet provided by, uh, Edward Dunn, Shannon Murray, and Aaron Speck. Easy for you to say. There is a recommended motion there as well. Paul?
I move to purchase both two mills and two lathes for metals classes out of the fiscal year twenty twenty-two budget for approximately fifty-eight thousand dollars.
We have a motion by Paul, we have a second by Ron. Do we have any discussion or clarifying questions on this motion or topic? There's one thing that I will add is, this did come up in some review of things. This did not make it to finance and H R as they were going through some things on the wish list and sorting through the budget. This came out right after that, instead of hosting a separate one-item finance human resources meeting. I, we put this on the regular agenda, so if someone says, hey, I don't remember seeing this before, that's correct, you're seeing it for the first time tonight. So we worked to get that on here, uh, as all the bids and things came in after that last committee meeting. So any additional information or questions on this topic or the motion?
This will make it here on time because I know like with the computers and the thing else we talked about wasn't going to make it.
It's my understanding of the, the, the tricky part of Kevin's point on this one is that it's grant funded and sometimes you have to, like, ransom.
To the best of our knowledge, she answers yes, as long as the vendor doesn't say backorder, not a stock item, even though they bid this and said it was going to be delivered once approved. Any other questions on the motion or the topic? They're pretty excited about this. But, um, any other questions, we will call this for a vote. All those in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed, say nay. Any abstentions? Motion carries unanimously on a voice vote. Next item on our board of agenda for tonight is the Board of Education twenty twenty-two, twenty twenty-three Code of Ethics put on at a board member's request. I did not attach any topic summary sheet or the examples as I was intending to, so I would look for a motion to table if that is all right.
So move.
Motion by Paul to table, do we have a second by Chad? All right. Motion to table till the June meeting at this time, all those in favor of that motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed, say nay. Any abstentions? Motion carries, thank you. Next item on our agenda is an update, it's technical correction to a policy fifty-one eleven dot zero three per our bylaw zero one thirty-one point one. Superintendent is authorized to review and make technical corrections to policies that have already been adopted through our formal rulemaking procedures. The superintendent shall inform the board of any such such changes at the next regular board meeting. It was noted at the April committee meeting for C T P, a technical change, a lot of times you'll, for consistency, you'll see a change as an example from Board of Education just simplified to the word board as an example. Uh, this is just a for your information that Dr. Sample is utilizing that policy to make that technical correction. We'll move on to the next agenda item at this time. It's an anonymous donation for the Merrill High School student sponsorship for the summer program. There was attached donation form and information by Ms. Ali Libby regarding the donation of funds from an anonymous donor valued at four thousand dollars to sponsor Merrill High School student for the Columbia University Summer Program. This is coming to the board based on the fact that donation is over the twenty-five hundred dollar limit set in policy seventy-two thirty. It does need to come here separately for that approval, and there is a recommended motion. Do we have a motion this evening? Kendra?
I recommend a motion to approve the donation of funds from an anonymous donor valued at four thousand dollars to sponsor Merrill High School students for the Columbia University Summer Program.
Motion by Kendra, we have a second, second by Maria. Any discussion or question on the motion or topic? Kendra?
Just want to say thank you to whoever the anonymous donor is.
Ditto.
Absolutely. Anything that Mr. Murray would like to add on this Columbia University Summer Program and?
Yeah, so once I like that one, I'll commit that student that very important.
Excellent. Thank you. Any additional questions on this motion or topic? Hearing none, all those in favor of this motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed, say nay. Any abstentions? Motion carries unanimously on a voice vote. Next item on our agenda is the high school Blue Jay Nest donation from John and Michelle Smith. Attached to it have a donation form and the information from Shannon Murray regarding the donation of funds from John and Michelle Smith valued at four thousand dollars for the Merrill High School Blue Jay Nest. As stated in the last topic, any items of donation twenty-five hundred dollars or greater as said in policy seventy-two thirty must be brought to the board separately for approval. I would ask at this time for a motion. Maria?
Move to approve the donation of funds from John and Michelle Smith valued at four thousand dollars for the Merrill High School Blue Jay Nest and also thank them for their generous donation.
Motion by Maria. All sorts of seconds, I saw Chad's hand first. Any discussion on this or questions on the topic or motion? Any discussion or questions on the topic or motion? Hearing none, all those in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed, say nay. Any abstentions? Motion carries unanimously on a voice vote. Next item on our agenda this evening is the personnel report, the hirings, recruitments, and resignations retirements as updated by Edward Dunn. We do have a recommended motion. Anyone would like to make the motion? Ron?
Make a motion to approve the attached personnel report contingents upon the satisfaction of appropriate liquidated damage for resignations if applicable.
Easy for you to say, Ron, thank you for the motion. Do we have a second this evening?
Second.
Second by Paul. Any discussion or questions on the motion or this topic? Any discussion on this motion or topic? Hearing none, all those in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed, say nay. Any abstentions?
I got it because Kendall's on the right.
Good. You will abstain from the portion that Kendall's on. I will abstain from the portion that our daughter Cassandra Blake is on. Motion carries as noted. This time we are moving toward our consent agenda. I'll ask at this time if anyone would like anything pulled off of the consent agenda for discussion purposes. Anyone like anything pulled off the consent agenda? Otherwise, I would be asking for a motion. Maria?
Move to approve consent agenda items A through C, which includes minutes of the April nineteenth, twenty twenty-two, April twenty-five, twenty twenty-two, April twenty-seven, twenty twenty-two, and May four, twenty twenty-two meetings. Claims vouchers and receipts totaling three million nine hundred ninety thousand thirty-six dollars and fifty-two cents and donations totaling one thousand fifty-five dollars.
Motion by Maria, do we have a second? We have a second by Ron. All those in favor of that motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed, say nay. Do we have any abstentions? Paul?
April nineteenth.
All right.
I have a portion of the April nineteenth meeting.
All right. Motion carries with those noted abstentions. Next on our agenda this evening are items for future meetings. We have a couple of things that we are, are working on. The unfinished items for future meetings and discussion are the review of policy committee meeting frequency. Just that reminder of when we do find information from the O L A, that we don't get too big of a bundle to take too long and make it a very, very difficult and lengthy meeting. Also to keep in the front of our mind the subpay rate and if we, how we want to continue that going forward. If it's to leave that the same, increase that, or to do that by different tiers. With that said, is there any additional items that someone would like to bring to the board in the future? Please note that that does not limit you from suggesting those for committee items as well. And that reminder, as we get to the next committee meeting, we would then also select the chair amongst the members now appointed to those committees. Just that as a reminder. There are a couple of things that I'm going to assign for myself and just behind the scenes that I wanted to make you guys aware of. I don't know that we need to note them on here. There's just a couple of things that I've been asked to look into and to clarify, and then I don't have all the answers. Sometimes our, our trustee, Robert Rules of Order, uh, guidebook does or doesn't. So the two things that I'm going to look into and share, and it may be at a retreat or maybe in an email, are when someone is abstaining on a vote, is it considered best practice to abstain from discussion or deliberation? Or is that just open? I don't have that answer, so I'm going to work on that. Um, and also, um, when we are going through a lengthy discussion or deliberation, someone calling a vote, there is a process for that. That member must have the floor, be called on, then call the vote, not just say that. At that time, it is, in Robert's rules, does need a second to that motion. There is no discussion to that motion, however, it must pass by a two-thirds vote. The other thing that I'm working on that I want to get into the flow now that we're getting through the pandemic and COVID, I've been asked again to work on our adoptive board membership. Uh, as we talked last year, we talked about doing it by semesters, so I wanted to be ready for the fall and then talk about how we would rotate for the second term, for third and fourth quarters, or how we'll do that by the calendar. So I will put some additional thought into that. So those are the things on my plate going forward. I didn't hear anything else. Feel free to get in touch with myself or Dr. Sample or any of the committee chairs as they are announced for those topics. Just a reminder, next on the radio schedule tomorrow morning, Dr. Sample and myself will be on Blue Jay seven thirty radio at approximately eight fifteen A M going through tonight's board meeting. Future meetings of note, the School Forest Advisory Committee will meet on May twenty-third, four P M out at the School Forest. Finance Human Resources Committee meets Tuesday, May twenty-fourth at four thirty in the boardroom. Uh, it does say on our notes the twenty-fifth, so we did make that change with senior awards night and different things. Which is Virtual Academy's Governance Board meets Thursday, June second, twelve forty-five P M. They naturally will meet virtually. Our C T P or Curriculum Technology Pupil Services Committee meeting is next scheduled for Wednesday, June eighth, four thirty P M in the boardroom.
Yeah, that changed.
And that got changed as well, right?
To the first.
That moved up to the first in that opening there. So, okay, that will be on June first. Please note that change. On the next regular board meeting, we'll be here in our boardroom on Wednesday, June fifteenth, five thirty P M. As a reminder, as I stated earlier, as we get different questions on administrative reports, please ask right away of the superintendent and his district administrative teams as they will be fulfilling some vacation here as the school year winds down and we move into the summer. So that'll be good to remember going forward for the next couple of months. Yes, Tammy?
We added a special board meeting to.
We did, didn't we? And that is on the.
Tuesday, May thirty-first.
Tuesday, May thirty-first, five thirty P M here in the boardroom. So make sure we're looking at our calendars and, and clicking yes or no on our availability. I know Tammy. I know Tammy had reached out to everyone before to make sure we could have a forum. I am on vacation out of the country fishing in Canada that week, so I will turn the gavel over to Maria.
Jeez.
Figure the least I can do for having her speak the week before at graduation on my behalf. For those of you who don't know, that Saturday Memorial Day weekend is our daughter's wedding. So, I wasn't going to miss the rehearsal, although I tried to lobby for a little of that, moving sometime around, that's something you don't want to mess with.
No.
Once-in-a-lifetime thing for her, and we're all excited. So, thank you for taking over there for me. Appreciate that. Without anything else here to talk about on the agenda, we will go to our contemplated motion to adjourn into executive closed session pursuant to Wisconsin statutes under section 19.85, Part N1, Part N2, considering employment, promotion, compensation, or performance evaluation date of any public employee over which the governmental body has jurisdiction or exercises responsibility, Part NF, considering financial, medical, social, or personal histories, or disciplinary data of specific persons, preliminary consideration of specific personnel problems, or the investigation of charges against specific persons, except where Part B applies, which if discussed in public, be likely to have a substantial adverse effect upon the reputation of any person referred to in such histories, or data, or involved in such problems or investigation. Purpose of the closed session is to consider and act upon parental requests for student opt-out to state assessments, including the potential for this closed session to review the specifics applicable to the affected students if the discussion of such in open session be likely to have an adverse effect upon the reputation of the students pursuant to section 19.85, Part N1, Part NF of Wisconsin statutes. Such closed sessions shall be immediately followed by reconvening in open session for further consideration, ultimately act upon the parental requests. Additionally, we are going to review specific administrative contracts in regards to administrators leaving the district under the terms of their contract in signing or not signing retirement or resignation agreements. Do we have that motion this evening? Motion by Maria. Second by Ron. Could I have a roll call vote, please? Tammy?
Jeff Krieger?
Aye.
Ron Liberty?
Aye.
Kendra Osnes?
Aye.
Jaclyn Rundler?
Aye.
Maria Volpe?
Aye.
Paul Blue?
Aye.
Kevin Blake?
Aye. This time, we will clear and secure the room for closed session. Thank you all for your attendance. Stick around if you are interested in the reconvening in open session.